I'd like to call the Fridley School Board meeting of January 21st to order. And if we could all rise and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With our first meeting of the year, I would like to invite our newly-elected school board members to come around to the other side of the desk here. And we're going to swear in our new school board members with the oath of office. Fridley school board members wrote, their terms are alternating, so we have three school board members up for election every other cycle. So we never turn over all of us at the same time. Somebody always knows what's going on. So elected in November was Donna Perretto. She was already on the board, so this is her second term. And Abdi Salam Adam, who was appointed for the first, for one year to fill a gap, and he was now officially elected for his first term. And Jake Karnop, who was elected for his first term in November. It is an honor that you were appointed to guide the education of our community's students. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in a position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with participation of the community, and visions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocates on behalf of our students, our communities, and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and the staff to lead the district toward fulfilling our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to the community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. So now I turn it over to you to accept the oath. If you could read together, please.
Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 14 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Let's welcome them aboard. Let's get to work. Do I have an approval of the agenda with suggested motions and resolutions?
Approval of agenda, second.
Approved by Perretto, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. As is our custom, we have a spotlight on recognition each month at our board meeting. And Dr. Heil is going to present our employee of the month.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Devo, school board members, and our school board student representative for the first time. The employee of the month for the month of December is Laura Hingen, receptionist at Stevenson Elementary School. Laura has been a receptionist in Stevenson's front office for 10 years. Her position was added in 2009. She was the first to take on this role and molded it to what it is today. Prior to that, Laura was a para for a year and a half in kindergarten and in the lunchroom. Laura's an amazing gatekeeper for our school. She juggles multiple projects, all while having a phone in one hand and buzzing the door with the other. She has created strong relationships with families, enough that parents ask for her by name when they call the office. Laura goes above and beyond by giving courtesy reminders for multiple programs and works tirelessly with transportation to make sure all of our students get home each night. Laura's experience gives her a unique ability to be proactive in problem-solving, often being able to stop things before they happen. She is skilled in what she does, and her work behind the scenes is incredible. Her caring attitude and what's best for kids mindset has made her such a valuable employee at Stevenson. Laura brings joy to our staff with her daily spunk. She makes us laugh, and she keeps us in line. The way Laura listens shows how she genuinely cares for each of us. Although she will be greatly missed as she moves on to her next journey of retirement, she will always be part of our Stevenson community. And that was written by Principal Darryl Vosler, Stevenson Elementary School.
Nice tribute to Laura. Next up, we have superintendent and staff reports. And I invite Patty Hand and Kelly McConville and Dan Roth to the microphone.
Good evening Board Chair, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. We are excited to be here, and we have some wonderful updates to give you since our last update. I'm going to focus a little bit on academics, two of our highlights this fall. One is our teacher leadership team. We are very excited. There's actually a couple of our staff members in the room right now that are part of our teacher leadership team with CLR training. And they are training to be coaches, to continue the support in our journey of CLR at the high school, to work with fellow staff members, help run professional development sessions, and do lots of individual supportive one-on-one coaching. So we're really excited about our next steps in our journey with CLR. And we're thrilled that we have four very, very strong teachers to help support this work and be encouraging. The other academic piece that I wanted to update is Tigers United. It's our student group. They came and presented to you at an earlier school board meeting. And our student representative, Magali, is on our school board this evening. And it's been such a fun group to work with. And we're so thrilled with their focus, their dedication, and their empowerment, and their advocacy for Fridley High School to encourage, to make sure that it is a safe, inclusive, and welcoming environment for all of our students.
Hello. I'm here to talk about PBIS. We are glad to be part of PBIS cohort number 15 along with Hayes Elementary School. And it's a continuation of the work that we started last year with I Belong. And now that we're part of a cohort, we really wanted to focus down with the team of teachers that is really moving this work forward. And we're focusing on I Belong, but really three attributes: being respectful, responsible, and real. And through this, we want to really focus on the positive. So we have Tiger tickets, we have the Tiger store. That team of teachers is really working on some staff development, some matrices, just, you know, how do I act in this space? And really, we're excited to be on this journey and look forward to the work to continue.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. We had a great start to the activities this fall. And we're halfway through the winter season already. And we're two weeks away from the beginning of sections for our winter season, so it just keeps moving along. But here are some highlights. One is our Fall Musical. We, if you saw Guys and Dolls, in my 13 years, I would have to say it may be the best total cast of voices that we've had been able to put together. And because of that, they won many Spotlight Awards. And both the production itself and several of our students will be able to attend in the spring, the late spring. And they will perform in front of, with the whole metro area. So that's a pretty big expectation that we've always had, and we've always sent somebody. To have our whole cast be honored like that is pretty neat. We had a kind of a magical football season. And in the history of Fridley, they've never won the conference. They would never win eight no. And for anybody who missed it, they missed one heck of a section final game. We kind of did a little Kansas City Chiefs to them. Down three touchdowns and came back. It was a magical season, and 10-1 they finished. And we have a couple of coaches who received awards. Coach Reese received Coach of the Year in the district. And Coach Anthony Bernitsky received the Section Coach of the Year for our tennis. And both are wonderful coaches and great for our kids. And we had also, our cross-country team won a Silver GPA Award within the Coaches Association. They give, and Coach Brad, Brad Fisher, we had a, someone resigned a week before, and he went the season on his own without an assistant, and actually grew the program to over 30 kids. And that team had a GPA over 3.4. So we were pretty excited about that. And I think, are we going to move on with our AAA? Okay, alright. So the AAA is kind of one of the first awards that comes out in terms of, as the season turns into the spring, you start to see many, many more of these types of awards. But it's put on by the Minnesota State High School League, and it's for students who participate in the fine arts and their athletics, and also must have a minimum GPA of 3.0. And each school will have a male and female representative who will go on to the region level. Two are picked from the region level, they go on to the state. And to the Minnesota State High School League, there'll be one male and one female of AA and A. So we will move our two people forward. And what I've asked is each of them to come up, and they're going to read to you one of their essays that they, part of the application. And what they're going to, they've been asked is, "How has your involvement developed you as a person?" So our first person up to read is going to be Adam Johnson.
I want to thank you for having me here tonight to speak to you guys. Being involved in academics, athletics, and arts has helped me beyond performance by teaching me a lot about time management, different cultures, and developing relationships with people different from me. I learned how to be efficient with my time through school, homework, practices, that were sometimes twice a day, and rehearsals in multiple ensembles than are always close to Fridley. My involvement in these areas taught me about balancing priorities for short and long term. It's also helped me gain a different perspective of different cultures. Academic, athletics, and arts all have their own separate culture. The culture of a football team is vastly different from the culture of NHS or an MYJB ensemble. You build different types of friendships through all these activities. The camaraderie in sports like football and wrestling is different from that of the friendships I've made through school and MYJB. In football, the team has the same goal of getting to state or getting to US Bank Stadium. In MYJB, everyone's goal is to play great music with each other and to become a better musician. In school, my close friends and I have a goal to get the best grades we possibly can. All three of those require a lot of hard work. No one just gets handed an A, or a section title, or a roster spot on one of Minnesota's most competitive ensembles. You have to put significant time, energy, and dedication in what you want to accomplish.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. And now our female winner, Jada Probasco.
Okay, hold on, I got to fix this. Okay, hi, I'm Jada Probasco. I'm a senior at Fridley High School. And I was asked to present to you today, "How has your involvement developed you as a person?" I can confidently say that my involvement with all of these areas has taught me discipline and growth as a human. Having these opportunities to be a part of these activities has been an escape for me. These past five years for me have been really difficult, dealing with divorced parents, and just like change, and having very, very complicated home life. However, these outlets and discipline has made me the woman I am today. I'm able to communicate wisely because of most of my teachers and peers around me. I can also say that a lot of the teachers behind me have built me up to be strong and wise, so when I go out into the world, I'm prepared. On and off the court, I'm able to be a supporting teammate, a very loving teammate. Being involved in activities throughout the school really pushes you and changes you in a way most people don't realize until later on in life. I've realized how much more I'm able to push through life and keep my head high when I'm at my lowest. My coaches and peers have been nothing but supporting and loving to me. These people behind me, my teachers, and my friends, and my family. Sorry. The people behind me have really pushed me, and they deserve nothing more than the world in their hands because they're just so amazing. I have so many communities that treat me as their own, and I can proudly say that I've developed and changed my life so these loving environments can stay within my life. I've been involved in softball, basketball within the middle school. I've been in choir, I've been in Christian fine arts through different churches. And that's, I've been very involved with my faith also. Having the leadership skills I have has brought me to pursue missions within my faith. I have been on one mission trip to Tijuana, Mexico, and helping others within that small period of time has changed me entirely. I have the opportunity to go to the UK and study at a Bible missionary school and outreach to Uganda, Greece, and Albania after graduation. I want to spread love everywhere I go the way that others have loved me throughout my journey. I want to go into social work to help prevent the home life I've had from others, and I just want to help everybody. I'm looking into becoming a school social worker. I want to show others, especially the kids, that you can be a great leader, that you are not your family, or whatever situation you've been dealt, and that you are the one calling the shots in your life, and you can walk in the footsteps of love and change others' lives completely. Moving forward, I plan to build a platform where I can speak out and encourage others to be great leaders everywhere in the world because that's what we need. I cannot thank Fridley enough for developing me into who I am since the very first years of second grade. Fridley and its teachers have taught me so much, and I am beyond thankful for everything it's exposed me to. And when people ask me where I go to school, I can proudly say I went to Fridley High School. Thank you.
We can proudly, we at Fridley High School can proudly say that about you as well. Thank you to both of you for your commitment and dedication. That is not easy.
I just love seeing how excited and proud all of you are. Like, you need to stop because you're going to make me go mad. I just, that is so special. And now I have goosebumps all over. So that was lovely here.
Alright, that was difficult to follow. They were amazing. So, I'll bring it back. We've talked a little bit, and we'll continue to talk. We're very excited as we continue our journey with career and technical education. And one of our topics that we have been working on and are presently offering, and will continue to take our next steps in our journey, is around concurrent enrollment. We have EMT and EMR classes, which are offered through Pine Tech on-site. So what that means is students are able to take the classes at our site, and they can earn their college credit and their high school credit at the same time while they're at Fridley High School. So it's a wonderful opportunity for our students. As we move into next year, we are going to be working with Anoka Ramsey to offer our first statistics class at the high school and math, and offering concurrent enrollment. And then as we continue, we'll continue to be looking at math and English, and continue our next steps to continue to have those offerings at our school as well, which is a wonderful opportunity. There is a credentialing piece in which teachers need to have their master's degree within the subject area, not necessarily education, but if they're looking at teaching an English class through concurrent enrollment, they need that master's in English. So we're working on the credentialing piece along with taking our next steps on how to educate our students, educate their families about the different opportunities. But we're really excited. It's the start of our work. We're going to continue our work. But I wanted to share a little bit about that tonight because it's a piece that I've been very involved in the last couple of years, and I'm excited to continue to take the next steps. Alright, at this time, we had our MYP personal project celebration. A few of you were able to attend that evening. And I have asked Naomi to come up and present her project on the homelessness, and she's amazing. So welcome Naomi.
Before we have Naomi begin, I'd just like to say we're really pleased to see you adding the additional courses and partnerships with post-secondary opportunities and that dual enrollment that really gives our students a taste of, sometimes what they figure out they don't want by being in those courses, but also helping them advance more quickly to the workplace. So thank you for moving that forward and continuing to move that forward.
Good evening, everybody. So today I'm going to be, my name is Naomi, and I'm going to be talking to you about my personal project. And my personal project was about helping the homeless. So my goal is to find ways to help the homeless. So my goal was to be able to raise enough money to be able to buy hygiene products for the homeless. And I wanted to be able to create, with those hygiene products, a hygiene care kit for them. I wanted to be able to raise, I wanted to be able to get enough donations, like clothes and blankets, so I'm able to give it to them. I wanted to give them out to them face-to-face and be able to like, you know, just be in their presence with them. So the way that I raised money was a Cup Foods bagging fundraiser. So with the fundraiser, I actually ended up working with the partner Samira Umar. And I decided to work with the partner because I felt like I could be able to raise a lot more money. So I did the Cup Foods baggings. So if you don't know what the Cup Foods bagging is, you just set up like a date with them, and you kind of set up your little stand for whatever you're going to do. And you just get volunteers, and you go up to the people who are checking out their food and stuff like that, and you just ask them if you want to help them bag for you. So then they say yes, then you help them bag, and then they'll see like a little sign of the donation there. You know, we kind of like, ah, you know, like, it's right there. And yeah, and if they say no, then we'll just like, you know, just say, "Thank you for your time." So we ended up setting the dates, November 30th in Fridley, and this Fridley Cup Foods, and December 1st in Blaine. Okay, so this is just like the process and like the pictures. So right there is like the boards. We just had like a couple of signs saying what we were doing and what we were raising money for. We had like example of like hygiene products. And you just see like our volunteers. So Samira's, Samira and I, friends, just like went up to them and just volunteered for them. So it was really fun. So the final result of our Cup Foods bagging. So we took the shifts, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And Samira and I were there for the full time, and then we had our volunteers do shifts. So, because we didn't want to make them, you know, we know they have a life too. So in the Cup Foods of Fridley, Minnesota, people donated 739 with 81 cents. And then the Cup Foods in Blaine, Minnesota, people donated 611 and 16 cents. So altogether, in total, when we calculated everything, people donated 1,357 with 97 cents. So I was, we were all really grateful that we got that amount of money because we thought we were just going to raise like around like 700, maybe 600 dollars. So it was really great to see that we raised enough money. So what we ended up doing is we split the money in half. So I went to buy, so what I did is I just bought hygiene products for men and women. So I have like these care kits. This is for women. And for the women, we bought lotion, towels, they can use the towels in any way that they want to. Lotion, toothpaste, toothbrush. And then we bought women towels, because it's very expensive nowadays for them. And deodorant, and chapstick. And then for men, we just bought like the same products, but like for men. Yeah, and then. So yeah. So we went to our local Walmart here in Fridley. And we just, that's all the pictures. So we made the hygiene kits. And the reason I ended up buying Ziploc bags, because, and like the clothes ones like this, because, you know, you know the ones that I'm talking about? Those that go like that? They, if they end up, so I wanted the homeless to be able to like reuse these bags again so that it wouldn't get tired out. So then that's just the process. I ended up making my mom, and like my family helped me. So in total, we made 60 hygiene care kits, 30 for women, and 30 for men. So then we ended up going to Dorothy Day. And yeah, and so then early in the morning, the homeless go there to eat breakfast. So then we thought it would be like a great time to like give them, so give them like the hygiene care kits to them. So we went up a little bit early in the morning, and we just started to give them out as soon as we saw them. And then as, also, we grabbed like the donated blankets and clothes that we got from like my family members, and we just gave it, we kind of like set it aside and let them grab what they needed to. So we ended up having enough money. Well, we had, we had like a little bit more. We had like around 200 dollars left. So we ended up using that money to buy new gloves and socks because when we were giving out the hygiene products, a lot of homeless people, a lot of homeless were asking us for, if they had, if we had gloves or if we had socks. So we thought it would be like a perfect like time and like moment to give that stuff to them. So my motivation for this project. So I wanted to like help, like what kept me like keeping going and like being organized and everything was to help others who are struggling without like judging them, you know? And then I wanted to be able to provide for them because I know a lot of times, like nowadays, there's a lot of homeless, and they just need people to like reach out to them and help them. And I wanted to make like, you know, like a little small impact in their lives. So yeah, and then what I took from this personal project was to take my personal needs aside and to help others. Because for example, like women towels, nowadays, it's really expensive for homeless, and homeless just don't have enough money for it. So it's either you buy like bed, or it's food. So, so that's all. Thank you for your time.
Naomi, come back. I have a question. I have a question. You can't just run off. So my question is, when you were giving out products and the care kits, what was the response that you had?
Um, the responses were really nice. A lot of people kind of like gave us a hug, and they're like, "God bless you, thank you." And I don't know, it was, it's just, I don't know. Like when you give out stuff to people who are in need, it's like a really good feeling, you know? And I just, you know, thank God for that opportunity.
You did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And we have another special guest this evening, Isabel. We had a silver platter celebration before winter break. And Isabel is one of our IBDP students, and she said absolutely she'll come to this evening and present her paper. Come on up, Isabel. Very excited to share her presentation with us here tonight.
She looks excited.
She does. She looks excited. So I'm just proud of her. And when, when, when the kids that morning shared their presentations, and they went across, and they shared for a moment like why they did, and I was just intrigued. And so I had a conversation with Isabel, and she said, "Yes, she'll come." And so she's here tonight. So welcome.
Hi, I'm.
Hi, I'm Isabel Rivera. I'm a senior at Fridley High School and I just want to tell you about some of the, the things I'm involved with at the high school. So I have been, I was in choir for like three years. I'm a full DP student, as she said, as Ms. Hand said before. I am an, a part, a person, wow, I can't say this. I'm a part of the MHS, the Minnesota Honor Society. I have been on the tennis team for six years and I was a captain this year. I, I'm a link crew leader and so yeah, um, to start off, wow, I can't speak, I'm so sorry. Um, so the title of my topic is in Spanish, so it goes. Como han mujeres latinas roto barreras en música dominada por los hombres y tienen una influencia positiva en la generación joven de mujeres latinas en el pasado y presente? So it's basically saying, how have Latin women broken down barriers in male-dominated music and positively influenced the younger generation of Latin women in the past and present? And so the purpose, like why I chose to focus on this topic was ever since I was in like fifth, fifth and sixth grade, all my Spanish teachers have talked to me about Selena Quintanilla and she was a very famous Tahaunna musician. And sadly, before she could like really break more barriers in the male-dominated like music, Latin music, she was killed by her manager, which is really sad, but I wanted to like research more into like all the Latino, wow, the Latino women who have made an impact and broken down those barriers because Latin music is mainly male-dominated. So I got to like learn more about like Gloria Estefan and Celia Cruz and like Ivy Queen and Carol G. They range from like all the way in like the 60s to like nowadays. So yeah, throughout this process, I have had Ms. Latzka, she's my Spanish teacher for three years. So she was my advisor, so I thought it was really fun and she was very helpful throughout the process because I just, I went to her whenever I needed her help and it was just, it's really hard to write an essay in Spanish. And so I knew that going in, but I was just like, I just, once you get going, it's like, it's really easy to start going and so it's just really fun to write because it's like you help improve your Spanish skills and everything. And so after the process of like finishing it up and going to the Silver Platter Award, it feels really great to be like, okay, my extended essay is out, is out of the way, it's really done. And so I was really happy about that because, you know, just, yeah. And so from this experience, I learned that once you put like all your effort into something, it's really easy to get through it and that when you help, have help from people like your teachers and your advisor and your mom, because you know, she's very helpful. It's, it's, it's very easy and it's very fun and it's very interesting to hear everybody else's Silver Platter like award topics. And so, yeah, yeah, that's about my topic. So thank you.
Do you have any questions for Isabel?
I just want to commend you for being bilingual and multilingual. It's an asset and you have an advantage in, you know, speaking Spanish and English. I think you're on top of, of the, you know, workforce in the United States. So I really recommend that you continue on that path, that the more languages, the better we are as a, you know, as a global community. So proud of you for doing that.
Do you have a plan of where you're going to go to school, what you're going to do after graduation? Are you going to start, are you going to continue with music? Are we going to hear some music from you at some point?
No.
She's like, no, not me.
But I applied to the University of Minnesota Twin Cities and so they still have to get back to me, so I hope that I get in.
And what would you go for?
Um, I applied for a major in Spanish and Portuguese Studies, so I want to like find a way to like become like a translator or something or find like a way to like go with that to like help people who speak Spanish and don't speak English in America, so yeah.
Awesome, good job. We'll be excited to hear, right?
Following your progress.
Yep.
And really quickly before I open up to questions, I would like to thank all of our students who came tonight and presented. I think they were all amazing and made me very proud, so thank you very much.
We love having students present. It helps remind us of why we're here. Meetings can get kind of boring sometimes. So it, but it really helps us see, this is what we're all working for, is, is the kind of results we're seeing through you and having you here is, it's just a great joy to see everything that you're doing and what our future looks like with you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present this evening.
Thank you. Well, all the great things that are going on in the Fridley School District are not lost on our community. We are fortunate to have a resolution every month accepting gifts to the Fridley School District. So whereas the School Board Policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts to the district, the board may accept a gift grant or devise of real or personal property by the adoption of a resolution. And so therefore it'd be resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the Fridley School District. The following persons donated to Stevenson Elementary School for a total of $5,020. Fridley Lions Club and Hector Saavedra. And the following persons donated to Fridley High School for a total of $450 for the Senior All Night Party, Allison Hoff. And an anonymous donor also. So do I have a motion to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Adam. And this is a resolution, so Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Adams?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Mr. Carnop?
Aye.
Ms. Prado?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Resolution passed. Gifts accepted. Next up, we have our, our motions. We're going to have a number of second readings and adoption of policies, so I invite Mr. Pietraskey to review those with us and then we'll do motions for all policies collectively at the end unless there's any distinction.
Good evening, Board Chair Delvo, Board Members and Superintendent Heil. So there are seven policies up for second reading tonight. They're all being admitted tonight without change except one. Instructional Services 68, there's going to be one word change in Section 3A, we're going to be removing the word disabled. That's the only change for those seven policies.
Do I have a motion to accept the policies?
Motion to accept all seven.
Second.
Motion by Prado, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next up, we have the School Board Organization and Annual Authorizations for 2020. So in January of each year, we have our officer appointments as well as for committees. There are a number of committees that Board Members serve on, so we bring that information. It helps keep the district informed. So there are some committees that are specific to Fridley and then there are statewide committees to help us stay connected with what's going on with other school districts, Minnesota School Board Association, et cetera. So do I have a motion to, to approve the School Board Officers for 2020 and the School Board Representatives for 2020?
Motion moved.
Second.
Second. Moved by Adam, seconded by Thornton. We did not make any approvals on School Board Salary this evening, so the motion would only cover School Board Officers and School Board Representatives. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next, we have the School Board Authorization. This is to approve the annual School Board Authorization for the Life News as the official newspaper for 2020, 2021. The official depositories, the approved attorney firms for legal services as needed, authorization for the treasurer to pay contracted salaries of school personnel upon the order of the district chair or, and clerk, authorization for the treasurer to pay all special payroll wages. So these are the roles of the, the School Board roles, giving each of us those authorizations based on the position. Do I have a motion to approve those authorizations?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Prado, seconded by Carnop. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next, we have the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is, it approves routine actions of the board. Items include minutes of the regular School Board Meetings and work sessions which were held on December 17th, 2019, our monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absences, terminations, resignations and retirements. And the, this month, the 7th and 8th grade overnight trip to the East Coast on June 15th through the 20th of 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
And a, motion by Prado, seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent Agenda approved. And now, Mr., we'll invite Mr. Pietraskey again to read the first reading of our next set of policies.
So we didn't get a chance to review this in the work session, so I'll spend a little bit of time on this one right now. I'll have to admit that whenever I see a lot of red on a policy, looks like, a little bit like my, one of my high school English papers maybe, means there's a lot of changes that we're going to be looking at. So one of the things that I want to remind the board of is that the changes that we make are generally in line with MSBA policy and in this situation, we're taking a look at changes that reflect our practice and then increasing the fidelity of our practice. So we're talking about how we plan, how we govern and how we implement staff development and those changes are noted in one, Sections 1, 3 and 4. Okay?
And if you could please explain for our listeners what MSBA stands for?
Minnesota School Boards Association, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. And a lot of times in this particular policy too, there's, there's name changes. So the MSBA will, will suggest a name like District Staff Development Committee, we might say that's our administrative team, things like that, so. Any questions at all?
So we will revisit these policies over the month and then they will come back at the next board meeting where we'll discuss in the work session, any potential changes and before they go to second reading and approval. So, so there will be no decision on any of these tonight at this meeting. Thank you. And now as we were, just a minute, Stephen, I don't see you on my agenda. There you are. Welcome, Mr. Keeler.
Yes, yes, thank you.
I'm like, I don't see his name. And you have some first readings as well.
Correct. Board Chair Delvo, Board Members and Superintendent Heil, I just have one policy for you tonight. It's Policy 902, it's the use of school district facilities and equipment. And no major changes in this policy. The only change for your note would be Section 4, last paragraph in that section, we changed it from, removed the word working and it's just 10 days. And then the last section where we made a change was Section 7, where we changed it from four, at least four days to at least four working days prior. And that's the third paragraph down. Other than that, we looked at some of the other policies in other districts that do a lot of facilities rental and we tried to model it off some of that. So we, no further changes were needed here. Thank you.
All right. Any questions while we have Mr. Keeler here? All right.
Thank you.
And Ms. McLemore, if you could review, I think you have three policies.
Yes, I do. Board Chair Delvo, Board Members and Superintendent Dr. Heil, today I present three School Board Policies that are up for revision and these are in our 900 series, which is Community Relations. The first one is Policy 903, which is Visitors to School District Buildings. And we have changed the, the heading a little bit of that policy to be inclusive of the fact that we do have community members coming into our buildings for various reasons, not just school-sponsored events. And so while we do have buildings, we also have facilities and that could mean anything depending on the type of event that is being held. So the title has changed to be inclusive of all district sites and we have included information for PSEO, which is Post-Secondary Enrollment Option. We do have students at the high school who participate in concurrent enrollment at our technical colleges to get some college credits. And the template that we have used, I will reference what John said earlier, is MSBA, Minnesota School Board Association, to make sure that is consistent with that. So we have cleaned up some of the information in here and taken the guidelines and plugged them back into our procedures, but we wanted to make sure that the PSEO piece was included in there because that's a statute. The information is already contained in our procedures and it doesn't hurt to have it in two places because sometimes someone just pulled one document and didn't look at the other one. And the policy, the statute is really to set guidelines as to how they can still come back into the building and access technology for their learning. Visitor limitations and that last paragraph is based on the MSBA template. Any questions on that? Okay. The next one is Policy 904, which is Distribution of Materials. We frequently get requests from community members to share information and resources with our community. We have changed the title to Include and Organizations. We do have individuals who have activities and information they want to share, but frequently we have represented, representatives of organizations contacting us on behalf of the organization and seeking permission to share resources with our families and our students. And under general statement of the policy, we have added Item B, which is to provide for orderly and non-disruptive distribution of materials. The School Board adapts the following guidelines and procedures. Again, that is from MSBA template for Policy 904. And because we added the word guidelines, we went and pulled the guidelines which used to be in our procedures and plugged them back into the policy. So after the School Board has reviewed this and adapt this, that will become part of our policies. And so the guidelines have now, which used to be in our procedures is now plugged in here. The Policy 904 is also on our website because our district uses an online flyer management system known as Peachjar. We are required to make sure that this is posted there because it serves as a guidelines for people who want to promote their material to know what the School Board policies and guidelines are. So when the revision is adapted, we will be able to upload the current information in there for our consumers to be able to use that. And the last one is Advertising and this one has only one change. Under B, we have changed the word School Board and substituted that with District to be consistent with the information in the policy itself as to who are the authorized approvers for that. And that's the only change for that, Policy 905 in Advertising.
All right. Any questions while we have Ms. McLemore here? All right, thank you and we'll review and discuss them again at the February meeting. So as I talked about earlier, we approved authorizations for School Board Members to be representatives on committees and so we report out on those committees at this meeting. That keeps the whole board and community involved about and connects it to those organizations we're representing Fridley at. So the first is the Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting held on January 9th. And I was called out of town at the last minute and was not able to attend that. So there, the only report I have on that is the 916 District also has an Education Foundation. And on February 21st, they are holding their Foundation Gala and Fundraiser, which is at, between 5:30 and 8:30 at the North Metro Event Center in Shoreview. And so anyone interested in participating in that, they have information on their website and we can get that on our website as well. So that is the only update I have on Northeast Metro 916. Association of Metropolitan School Districts, Board Meeting held on January 10th and we'll have Dr. Heil actually cover the next two, so.
Okay, thank you. I attended the AMSD Meeting on January 10th and we had two speakers there. Commissioner Steve Grove from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. He shared how much that technology is changing daily and that our workers coming into the workforce need digital understanding. So more workers, he also commented on are putting together part-time jobs that equal one full-time job and there's a desperate need for workers out in the system right now. And there's a desperate need for workers out in the system right now, which is no surprise to any of us. He stated next 10 years, 70% of the growth in the market will be people of color. And he said the department is focusing on what skills students will need. So uh, out of his mouth, CTE will be critical in the future in ensuring that we get the workforce that we need. As well as there was a presentation from Dr. Tom, Thomas Cote from the Minnesota Department of Public Health, as well as Annie Quebec. And they talked on vaping. And vaping is an epidemic among young people. It has been around for a while where older adults have been doing it, but it's more rampant around our younger people. And saying that our um, parents and adults needs to be aware of the different um, devices that are used anywhere from what can look like a USB drive to various things. Um, they did research on why younger students were vaping and it came out saying either due to oppositional behavior. Um, uh, our young students are in search for alternate uh, states of consciousness, uh, for escape or for self-medication. And just mentioned, there are several resources and tools out there available online for vaping to help parents and students. So thank you. Um, next, it is with quite a bit of pleasure, I would like to introduce our student school board representative this evening. This is Magali Ruiz Barros and she will tell us about our student um, work that's going on in the high school. Magali, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Board Chair Delvo, Board Members and Superintendent Heil. Um, so I'm here today on behalf of Tigers United and we have some updates. So on January 9th, we planned our next meeting. Um, we plan on talking about mental health again and expanding on it. And a way that we can build a plan of action to pursue an educational factor of mental health within Fridley. Um, we also discussed about Culture Night and when we can, finding just a date that works for everybody. Because a lot of our Tiger United like members are also really busy and we all have a lot of stuff to do. So yeah. Um, so we discussed about how we can make this year's Culture Night even better than last year. Um, and how anyone can express their culture however they please, such as dances, poems, et cetera. Um, and our goal is to get the, the school closer together and just learn about the different cultures that are in Fridley. Um, so yeah. And then for our student life, we are preparing for finals before the end of the semester. So everyone's rushing in, trying to reassess, getting any missing work done, including me. Um, and then Minnesota Honor Society is holding a shoe drive and donating pairs of shoes to foreign countries in need. Um, so if anyone would like to donate any shoes, feel free, um, will happily take them. And then AASU just hosted their first movie night showing the hate you give. Um, and they were, I think it was like a dollar to get in or you had to bring canned goods. Um, and that was to like help the community. And then Student Council is preparing the, is preparing for snow week next month and the annual winter pep fest. So this Friday, we're getting together again and kind of organizing all the like dress up days and what's gonna happen during pep fest. Um, another thing for Valentine's Day is we're making like Valentine like crush, like I don't know, it's like a, it's a different thing. But that's, I'm not, I'm not getting into details about Student Council. Um, but yeah, that's it. Any questions?
Uh, where do we bring the shoes if people want to donate?
You can probably bring them to Sharon, the main office, I'm assuming.
Bring them to the front office?
Just bring them to the front office. I'm pretty sure Sharon's aware of what's going on. So. Um, so yeah, thank you for having me. I really appreciate it. It's an honor to be up here. And kind of just like see what's going on. I mean, none of us like students really know like what happened at school board meetings. We never really hear about them. And I think it's really cool that I'm up here today and I'll definitely tell people and like every, all my friends about it and like, hey, like you should come to the school board meeting. Because you know, like we're the ones that are like in school, you know, we don't really know what's going on. So it's really important that we all know about it. So thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one quick question, Magali. Will the Tiger United, will we bring information on your thoughts on our next step for mental health? Coming from the students that'll be coming in the future?
Yes, definitely. It was kind of hard because winter break and then all that stuff. So, but definitely next month we'll have something there.
Okay. Thank you. We look forward to that. Alright, so we are um, with our final uh, agenda item, important future school board dates. Um, Schools for Equity in Education is January 24th at 9:00 AM at the Radisson Hotel in Minneapolis, St. Paul North. Uh, Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting is February 5th at 6:00 PM at the Bel Air School in White Bear Lake. The Association of Metropolitan School Districts Board Meeting Legislative Preview is February 7th at 7:00 AM at Cora Educational Center. And the Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting is February 18th, work session at 5:30, open forum at 7:00, business meeting at 7:30, all held here at the Fridley Community Center. One other event um, that I want to make sure is mentioned is the Fridley Schools Foundation Gala, which will be held January 30th at Jack's Cafe. And there are tickets available on the Fridley Schools um, website. There's a link to that. Um, so that's another way to support Fridley Schools and a fun night. So um, any others that I'm missing? Alright, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Adam. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:26.